I noticed we have Barbara Best, who is an alderman for the city. Stand up, Barbara. Thank you. And also Jim Corr, who is commissioner in Havelock.
He's over in the other room.
He's in the other room. We have the agenda. You've all had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Go into public, a motion to go into public hearing? So move.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity.
Glad to get you there fast.
Yeah, I know. Commissioners, thank you again for the opportunity on May 21st to present you with the annual fiscal year 19 budget. The budget was presented that day and has been available to the public both via the[74.56][74.56]internet and in my office. It totals $104,420,79 in both revenues and expenditures. It maintains the current tax rate of 53.94 cents per hundred dollars evaluation. At this time, unless you have questions for me, I'd recommend you open a public hearing and receive comments from the public.
Motion, public hearing?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we're in public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, not a soul signed up to participate in our public hearing.
This is going so wrong. Is there a brave soul out there that would like to stand up for public hearing?
Hundred four million bucks, go on once, go on twice.
Thank you.
Make a motion, go on and close.
So move. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
We are out of public hearing.
Now, public hearing, motion for public hearing on alcohol sales, but before we do that, well, let's do that first. Public hearing on early alcohol sales on Sunday.
Move to go into public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, no people voted or brought themselves forward on the budget. We've got 95 people that want to speak on the alcohol. We've got 11 people that want to speak on alcohol. Bill Wingard?
Wingard.
Forgive me, sir, please. State your name and your address.
My name is Bill Wingard, 4705 Edgewood Drive in Trent Woods. Appreciate the privilege to come tonight. I read in the paper where they were going to have this hearing, and I'm glad to live in a country where we can express our opinions. I'm here to ask you tonight to not extend these Sunday alcohol sales. I realize it's not a matter of many hours, but, gentlemen, if it just protects one life, one family. We know that social alcohol is a bane. I've been a minister now 60 years. I have witnessed a lot of hardship party consulting, and one of the primary causes of it has come from beverage alcohol. Now, I know you're not going to stop selling beverage alcohol, but at least we don't have to extend it. We can do that. I appreciate so much our Havelock commissioners. I'm glad that Commissioner Corr is here tonight, and I appreciate it so much, the concern that they showed for their citizens by refusing to extend these hours. I would ask that you please consider the same. If there comes such a conflict over this between those of us who would rather protect our people and those who not, I would ask you to consider putting it on a referendum, if that's not the people have a voice in it. Of course, we have a voice here tonight, and I appreciate that. If you've got time just for just a little, what is my time? Five minutes?
Four minutes.
Four minutes? How much have I used?
What happened to the clock? You know, cut it only eight.
There's no limit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No limit. There is no limits.
Well, I'm not going to drag it out. I promise this is not my pulpit. I feel confident behind my pulpit, but I'm nervous up here tonight, okay? But you might question my company, but I had a man that I loosely call a friend. He told me he used to be a gravedigger. He said he dug graves on Sunday morning because, he said, all the good folks were in church and the drunks were sleeping off Saturday night. So I say, let's don't, let's don't give, let's don't open more doors for more people. Fellas, I realize alcoholism is a disease, but it's a disease that is also financed by and protected and marketed by our government. At least the cost of it is. And though we might not be able to stop it, at least we don't have to extend it. And I thank you for this time, and I will ask you to please consider not extending these sales. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Holliday? Can I get that?
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for hearing me. Let me first confess that my name is Chris Holliday, and we currently reside at 3505 Powell Street here in New Bern. The great thing that I've noticed is that I'm a one-month resident of this county. It's been a tremendous blessing to have walked, to have driven in here from Arizona, having retired from the military, and see the beauty that comes. My fear is that I am the son of an alcoholic, and I know firsthand the damage that alcohol causes to a family. I want to quote two Bible verses for you, as I will not take up much time, but Proverbs 20, verse number one, says, "Wine is a mocker; strong drink is raging, and whosoever is deceived thereby is not wise." Now, I don't doubt the wisdom that exists here in this county, but if we think that alcohol is not going to have a negative impact, we're foolish. If we think that extending the sales of alcohol is not going to have a negative impact, we would be very foolish. So I would ask that you do not move forward on this and extend the hours. A short duration of my time here and understanding doing a cost-to-benefit analysis could not truly be done unless we look at the impact that it's had on the lives of those who've lost loved ones due to alcohol-related incidents. We could measure funds, and if it's just about money, we know where it's going to go. But we're not here to talk about money. We're here to talk about the impact of alcohol sales on the lives of families, and we don't need to see another person buried because more alcohol is being sold in this county. So thank you for your time, and I am confident that this will not go through.
Thank you. Joe Cannon?
Joe Cannon, 1204 Cherry Tree Drive here in New Bern, North Carolina. I've been back about eight years as a missionary, been working in the Craven County jail, ministering in there, and I've noticed that the men will talk to me about that. One of the things that I have a privilege to do is to pray for them, pray with them, and often they're talking about alcohol, they're talking about addictions, and there's no point in extending the opportunity for them to get more addicted. They're talking about their families, they're talking about the alcohol that's involved in it. I've been fortunate that my family has not been involved in that directly recently, but I do want to say, gentlemen, that I'm against your extending it because we are doing that. Also, just if we want to get a little into the money, it's very expensive, I'm sure, for you to keep each and every inmate in there, and many of them are going in there the second and the third time. I hope we'll never see that because we'd like to have an influence on that from the Word of God, but the truth of the matter is, they're going in a second or third time, and it's because alcohol is so available to them when they get out. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Dan McMillan, but maybe wrong.
Good evening, everybody. Dan McMillan, I reside in Havelock 154 Keith Drive, work at Food Lion. I'm a store manager for 23 years. Probably 16 of those have been at the Havelock store. Have a couple bullet points I like to read regarding earlier Sunday sales of alcohol. Food Lion supports the adoption of an ordinance in Craven County to permit earlier hours for sale of beer, wine products, beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday. Food Lion associates are focused on creating an easy, affordable, convenient shopping experience for our customers, and early Sunday sales gives customers additional flexibility during their shopping trips. Sunday is one of the top shopping days of the week for Food Lion, and we would like to allow customers to complete a full shopping trip during their visits. Out of Food Lion's 493 locations in North Carolina, 70% of our store locations are currently permitted to sell beer and wine products at 10:00 a.m., and we have seen an increase in sales sold at 10:00 a.m. as a percentage of total Sunday sales, indicating customers are appreciative of earlier purchasing opportunities. In closing, permitting early Sunday sales would align Craven County with surrounding areas that have adopted earlier Sunday sales for both on- and off-premise permits, such as Greenville and Goldsboro, as well as support local retailers in residence. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ray Griffin?
Amen, God bless. I did start to stand up on the budget because I appreciate you guys holding the tax situation where it was. You've done a good job. Bless you for that. Amen? Anyhow, I want to look at this drinking. We've talked about this many times, and I wrote a bunch of stuff down. There are storm signals all over the horizon warning us that a famous free democracy, we're headed for the grave. The Bible states, "The foot shall slide in due time, for the day of calamity is at hand; for the Lord shall judge his people when he seeth that their power is gone, and he shall say, 'Where are all their gods?'" We have become a nation of addiction. Alcohol is still the number-one drug in America. The man who votes for the saloon or the dispersion of alcohol is pulling on the same ropes with the devil, whether he likes it or not. Alcohol is one of the greatest evils of our day. It degrades the individual, the family, political, and business upon everything it touches. There's just one prime reason why this whole alcohol business has not been knocked into hell, and that is because the false statement that the beer joints and distributors are needed to help lighten the taxes. And we hear it all the time, they help with the tax situation. The alcohol business has never paid, and it has caused more than the revenue derived from it. I challenge you today to show me whether saloon or the alcohol business has ever helped businesses, education, church, moral, or anything we've held dear. Alcohol promises good cheers since sorrow, it promises health that causes disease, it promises prosperity and ends adversity, it promises happiness and sends misery. It's God's worst enemy and the devil's best friend. As far as neither youth nor old age, it's a situation that we see the unborn child being born, it cocks the highway patrolman with his pistol, it attacks defense's women, it robs the kids of their childhood, it leaves us in rags and robs your family, it rains insanity and breeds suicide. An estimated 88,000 people have died from alcohol-related annual, or making alcohol the third-leading preventable cause of death in the U.S. Drug overdose has only killed 64,000. As I talked was before we're in here, alcoholism has actually killed more than opioid, and they've rained out of all the time, but don't bring up alcohol sales. To put it in a nutshell, I'm fed up with the pessimists who are so busy making preparations for this country funeral. I'm disgusted with those who are trying to shift the basics of our national life from God to greedy prosperity and to mere human opinion and operation. The moral principles and precepts contained in the scriptures ought to form the basis of all our civil constitution and laws. All the miseries from vice, crimes, ambitions, injustice, opposition, slavery proceed from dispersion or neglecting the precepts contained in the Bible. The normal way to get rid of alcohol is to quit raising alcoholics, to put the business that makes alcoholics out of business. Alcohol fills the jails and the penitentiaries, and the taxpayer pays the bill. We can't pay ourselves out of this situation. The short comer of our nation is no more than a magnified reflection of the sins of the people. We need to take Craven County back to where it used to be in 1976, where you could walk down the streets. Do you realize the streets in New Bern on Sunday, you can't even walk down the streets because they have pulled the tables out to the edge of the street there, and kids are running and playing, and you can't even hardly walk down the street? Need to get back to where we were some years ago. We can do this by getting back to where we were in 1976, back to the blue law, where the stores of ill-reviewed could not be opened on Sunday. So we need to get serious about this and quit playing around. This shouldn't even be brought up today. 30 years ago, this wouldn't even been an issue. It would have just been simply said, no, they're not going to open up, we're not going to do it, but today we condone it. I even sit in here and talk with you guys, and you said, well, it's so ready and accessible, we control it and we do this, but we're not doing a very fine job of controlling those who make laws. The laws have been made, alcohol laws are made, but it hasn't stopped the killing. It had to stop the drug driver from killing someone. Gun laws and all these laws have been made, but the best law that we can get a hold of is the hand of God. Remember what the preamble to the North Carolina Constitution says? I wish everybody would read that. We serve an almighty God. The preservation of our civil union and our religious union and all these, that he is the creator of all things. If we would just get back to what North Carolina was founded on, the preamble of North Carolina Constitution, we wouldn't have to worry about selling beer on Sunday. Why is it two hours is going to make a difference or three hours from 12 o'clock sale to 10 o'clock? All I can see is just going to constitute as another alcoholic, another drunk or another drink. So please, write, sit this down, think about it. You guys, if you vote for it, then you're condoning it. You're looking at it, you're saying it's okay, but you're not going to make any money out of it because God's going to have his way, one way or the other. Amen? God bless you.
Thank you. Rick Aldrich?
My name's Rick Aldrich, 925 Greenfield Heights, Havelock. I've been a pastor for 17 years, and the location we've been in the last 10 years has given me opportunity to view alcohol in a different way than I ever had before in my life, and I can assure you, no community is bettered by easier access to alcohol. No human is bettered by easier access to alcohol. So I want to lend my voice to encourage you to respect the Lord's day and to avoid this additional temptation to those who struggle with the addictions of alcohol. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Edward Betts?
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak, but before speaking directly to the issue, I would like to first thank you for your service to the citizens of Craven County. Decisions you make are most often difficult, and this is sure to be one of those times. However, if you are a Christian and you serve the people of Craven County, I would like to urge you not to be pressured by the false narrative that you must set aside your Christian convictions when casting a vote as a duly elected official. This is a tactic often used by folks who say you cannot legislate morality, and your religious points of view have no place in matters of governance. The often twisted phrase, separation of church and state, is frequently used to discourage people of faith in positions of government from voting according to the dictates of their own conscience. Please remember the following facts as you consider how you will vote regarding Sunday brunch bill, which is both moral and religious in significance, and in my estimation, of greater importance than dollars and cents. Our constitution guarantees our freedom of religion, not freedom from religion. As citizens of this great country, we owe a gratitude, our gratitude, excuse me, for many of the freedoms we enjoy to religious people, in particular, our Baptist brethren, for without their persistence, the Bill of Rights would not exist. With that being said, each of you commissioners has every right, and may I say duty, before God and man, to consult your deeply held religious convictions in any decision you make on behalf of the good and law-abiding citizens of this county. Finally, regarding the matter at hand, I'm opposed to changing the law because I believe the moral and religious significance of the current law far outweighs the business and revenue benefits that a change of two hours might afford, and I appreciate your time. And if I didn't say my name, I'm Edward Betts. I'm from 104 Albert Court in Havelock. Thank you.
Johnny Clark?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity of being able to speak this afternoon. Heard a gentleman say a while ago that he knew what alcoholism was because it was in his family. Well, I can say the same thing. I came from a family of alcoholics. Folks that are on my daddy's side at several two were alcoholics until later on in their life, when they got saved and come to the saving knowledge of Christ. Thank God, they were right with the Lord when they died. Then we talk about our young people today and setting the proper, right example for them to go by. We talk about the opioids and all that kind of stuff, and many years ago, it started not with the opioids, but it started with the alcohol. Alcohol is not a disease. Being an alcoholic is not a disease, it is a sin. And a lot of us don't like to hear that kind of talk and wording of sin and so forth on down the line, but we don't need no more. And given two more extra hours for a drunk to walk in off the street to buy his next bottle of wine or his next six-pack of beer, oh, make him wait. Bless God, make him wait, because he doesn't need to get it to begin with. I'm a firm believer that we don't need to have alcohol at all. I believe we need to close all the, as Brother Race called him, we need to close all the saloons and get it done with, but we know that's not going to ever happen because we're still in the flesh and sin's going to reign. But there's no need of us sitting back as the good brother just got to saying, sitting back and saying nothing and not speaking our minds and our convictions. Now, when it gets down to convictions, now, folks, I'm going to lay one on you. If you're a true Christian, born-again believer in Jesus Christ, I just don't see how you could vote for this bill, whatever you want to call it, ordinance to pass this day. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyker Gonzalez?
I'm Tyker Gonzalez, 125 Turkey Quarter Creek Road, Coast City, 28523. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm against this proposal concerning the sale of alcohol earlier on Sundays. When I grew up, no stores were open on Sundays, period. If you were making Sunday dinner and you ran out of something, you didn't go to the store and get it, you borrowed it from a neighbor, or you didn't have it, period. That's the way it was. Later, in my younger years, came the famous blue law debate. Stores that chose to open on Sunday now could be open between the hours 1:00 and 6:00 p.m. Next, it was the approval to buy beer and wine on Sundays. Now, some cities and counties are choosing to allow the sale of beer and wine before noon, while others have allowed liquor stores to open on Sunday in North Carolina as well. So what's the issue about Sundays? It's the Christian Sabbath. The Sabbath is mentioned 174 times in the Bible. That means it's a big deal to God. Jesus spoke of pulling a lamb out of the ditch on the Sabbath, and that it is lawful to do good on that day, but using it for one's own gain, financial or otherwise, taking away the holiness of it is not. Now, according to the National Center for Statistics and Analysis for 2016, North Carolina is listed as number five for alcohol-impaired fatalities in our nation, number five. Now, I'm going to share with you the other reason why I disagree with Sunday alcohol sales, let alone selling them earlier. It was the first Sunday in November 2002, about 6:00 p.m. My brother and sister-in-law and their daughter were coming home from Wellington after visiting with family and attending church services. A drunk driver ran a stop sign, hit their van in the middle, flipped it upside down, sent it over 100 feet, gouging it into the pavement. Linda and Donald were killed almost instantly, but their, our 14-year-old niece survived by the grace of God. We're also very grateful their 11-year-old son was not in the vehicle that night. The horrors our family went through will forever be burned into our memories, and I pray to God, nobody within the sound of my voice will ever have to go through that. Two children lost their parents due to a drunk driver on that early Sunday evening. Two families were destroyed that Sunday night as the drunk driver, who did survive, although his passenger did not, also had two young children and a wife. One family was keeping their Sabbath sanctified and holy, one man was not. According to Wikipedia, research regarding the effect of the repeal of blue laws has been conducted. Professor Eliza Hoffman of Baylor University wrote, "Regarding culture, the impact of vanishing blue laws could be larger. A study in New Mexico in 2006 found a sharp increase in drunken driving, drunken driving on Sundays after the state dropped its Sunday ban on packaged alcohol sales. A broader study by MIT and Notre Dame in '08 found that the repeal of blue laws led to decreased church attendance, decreased donations to churches, and increased alcohol and drug use among religious individuals. These wide-ranging effects cannot easily be pinpointed to specific causes, but one of the latter study's authors, Mr. Daniel Hungerman, suggested that blue laws might have been fulfilling their original intent, to keep people pious. Some say this two-hour change in allowing earlier alcohol sales is no big deal. Some say it was no big deal, we allowed stores to open Sunday. We have been a part of a slow but sure fade away from God's Word. We have chipped about all that's left of Sunday and its original meaning into a morsel the size of an ice cube. It's just another day of the week in our 24/7, 365-day new norm. It's now up to you to decide if we continue this fade until the ice is completely crushed or we stand in the way of a two-hour profit window for a grocery chain on the Sabbath that was once upon a time not even allowed to be open on this very important day." Thank you for your time.
Jim Corr?
Chairman, Commissioners, I do again thank you for your time tonight, and tonight I'm glad to be on this side of the dais. But I already sent you a letter dated 20 May, so I'm not going to repeat everything I wrote in that, but a few things I'd like to add to it. First of all, when we were deciding this in Havelock, the overwhelming majority of people who corresponded with us and presented to us that night asked us not to pass the bill, or not to pass the ordinance, and we did not. And now, we have businesses right at the edge of our town that are in county jurisdiction, and I'm asking if you would please consider protecting our citizens that asked not to have it by continuing not to move the alcohol sales in the county so that they don't just cross right outside the city limits, buy their alcohol, and come right back in the city when we're trying to protect our people who asked us to do so. Not to argue with the gentleman from Food Lion, but when one of our commissioners went to 11 different businesses in our town, she was told that it would not necessarily increase sales overall, it would just move sales from noon to 10 o'clock. And if I heard him correctly, he said their 10 o'clock sales increased, but my question would be, what about their overall sales? Because none of the businesses in Havelock seem to indicate it would actually increase their overall sales, it would just move the time of their sales. Another, not only am I asking for protection to Havelock, but Vansboro has no alcohol sales at all on Sunday, and I would like to ask also, again, respect for their wishes as well, because, you know, there's businesses close to them as well of not allowing alcohol sales on Sunday. Of course, you know, we're talking from noon to 10 o'clock, but still, it would be nice to honor that and respect them as well. Jerry Schill, the chairman of God and Country Christian Alliance, sent you all a letter as well, but he wanted me to let you know, due to conflict with his work schedule, he was not able to be here tonight, but he wanted me to pass again his personal opposition to this bill. And I know this was in the letter I sent you, but just to reiterate two things. One, the CDC has done a study showing that moving alcohol sales two hours or more does increase public safety issues, does increase alcohol-related harms, and that's done by the CDC, it's not done by a Christian organization. The other one is the North Carolina Restaurant and Lodging Association has shown as of December 1st, 2017, only 143 of the 132 municipalities in North Carolina have adopted such an ordinance. That's only 27%. Only 23 out of the 100 counties have adopted such an ordinance, that's only 23%. So it's not like everybody is out there running to get on this and make sure it happens in their area. As a matter of fact, I think many are just trying to let it go and would rather not deal with it, or many have already made the decision not to vote it down, such as Havelock, Onze County, Bellhaven, and Welksboro. And so, gentlemen, I'm asking if you would continue to protect our citizens of Craven County and not vote for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. William Lenz?
William Lenz, Post Office, Box 846, Havelock. It is cruel to promote vice for money. It is cruel to promote vice for money. You do not want to promote vice to increase sales tax revenue. Public safety is a valid governmental concern. Those who do control themselves can buy alcohol at the current times. A man who drank all he could get his hands on might desire to buy soon. Grandfather and grandmother might look forward to going to church Sundays. There is now an expectation that drivers will be safer Sunday around noon than other Moving alcohol sales to 10:00 a.m. will also make alcohol impaired driving earlier. Is New Bern the only place in Craven County that voted to change Sunday alcohol sales to 10:00 a.m.? Havelock voted no. Please do not approve earlier alcohol. It will make the citizens less safe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there are no additional names on the list.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion was given, second. All those in favor of going out of public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, we've got Linda Wonsider.
Mr. Chairman, if the Board is not going to make a decision on the early alcohol sales this evening, I had several folks that came in to this public hearing that needed to leave. And so, if we're not going to make a decision, I would ask that we just give them time to leave before the public.
We want to make them, we want to discuss it, vote. Go ahead and knock, knock it out.
Let's knock it out.
Hold it. Hold it.
Do you want me to sit down?
Yes, please.
You have to say the name again.
And, and Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to present a motion, but first I'd like to ask the County Manager or County Attorney, do we need to make a motion? I mean, is there, can we make a motion not to do something that we haven't done? If so, how would you propose us to do that?
Only if you want to expand the hours from 12 noon to 10:00 a.m. do you need to take any action.
Okay.
If they want to take any action, maintain it at noon, otherwise.
Would it be inappropriate, Mr. Chairman, to ask this Board by just a voice vote if, if anybody would approve it if it did come up?
To which one, which side?
To moving it to 10 o'clock. Was any, would anybody approve that?
I think we'd have to take a roll call.
No, this is not an action, Mr. Chairman. I'm asking for a motion. I'm just, so.
Well, I, if we're going to talk about it and everything else, you know, I'm in favor for it. I've heard everybody saying, I understand the religious side. I've been called an atheist, and I go to church every Sunday and involved in it because I don't look at it as a church issue. It's a commerce issue for our businesses. We, if, where was everybody for New Bern? Where was everybody for Trent Woods? Where was everybody for Raleigh when they voted this in? This is issue that's put on us. We now have a good portion, well, I'll say all the, not all, James City is highly covered by this. Food Lion Store, Ruby Tuesday's is losing business by going across the bridge or going down to Carolina Colors because that's New Bern. So they get it. It's a commerce issue that our businesses have asked for help to be competitive and be in the same ballpark playing field as everybody around us. It's not about the money. I think he will tell you, it's not about the amount of money, it's the opportunity. We're not telling everybody, they've got to sell this alcohol, we're giving them the option. We didn't tell Chick-fil-A, we didn't tell Hobby Lobby. They can be open on Sundays, they chose not to. There's nothing wrong with that. I've heard the issue on additional problems. I've talked, I've had the city, the County Manager get with New Bern, they have not had an increased problem on their blotter from the police department. Newport has had it since November, they have not had one episode for a highway or any other dealing with it for Sunday for two hours. And for the last 15 years, Cherry Point has always sold it at 10 o'clock. You can always get it there at 10 o'clock if you want to do your shopping. I appreciate what everybody says on the church and what it does. I also heard they're making money, and now you're saying the church is going to lose money. The individual has got to have that choice. You know, the Catholics have a Saturday Mass at 5:00. So they can shop on Sundays, it's not bothering them. And you said the other services, what about the Sabbath? What about the Jewish people? Their Sabbath is Saturday. What about the other religions who have it on a Friday or a Saturday? I think we need to look at this as what our community, if New Bern had not passed it, Trent Wood had not passed it, I could probably stick here and say, yeah, we don't need to get the county involved. But you've got the largest city in this county who surrounds a minority community that we're going to deprive or have to have to go across the river. Ruby Tuesday's is losing business of that hotel back there on Sundays for brunch because they got to go across the river to get it. I don't know how this Board is going to vote. I've heard all kinds of issues and our reasonings why. There's other issues out there I'll talk to the Board on, comments was made. I was at that meeting, comments were not made directly that way. But look at it, please, Board, look at it as a commerce issue for your businesses being on a level playing field with your surrounding community within your own county. That's all I'm asking. I will vote for it if it comes up.
You want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we move from 12:00 to 10:00.
Motion for a second.
Seconding.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, have a discussion. I respectfully hear what my colleague is saying, but I'm a Christian first, before I am an American citizen or before I am a candidate Commissioner. And I had the great privilege of going to school at Calvary Babbitt Church School. Dr. Bill Wingard, who was our first speaker tonight, was, had the opportunity to be raised by two great Christian grandparents who instilled in me that we didn't drink. I do not drink, my wife does not drink. I do not look down on a person if that's what they choose to do. But I do not choose to do that because I feel of my testimony that I have as a Christian that that's not what I'm supposed to do. I also am a deacon in my church, and our Deacon Board discussed this at length, and my pastor discussed it with me also, in which I am a no vote. I will not vote for this. I personally do not see what, two hours, the wait is, you know, cost a big deal, why can't you wait two more hours? And so, and I, and I want to go as far to say this to Mr. Griffin. There are many, and, and I'm pinpointing you out because every time I see you, I think of something, a vote that I took some time back. Sometimes we take votes on this Board of Commissioners that we go back and that we wish we hadn't voted in the manner in which we voted for. I voted for a new ABC store in Bridgestone. I shouldn't have done it. And I personally apologize to my constituents and to, to you and, and to my Lord for doing it. It's a vote I wished I could take back, I did. But tonight I will vote against this if it goes.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? I'm going to tell everybody out in the audience, I am not 100% Christian. I'm going to tell you the truth. A lot of you are. You all do something wrong each and every day against God's word. I do believe in God, don't get me wrong. God has been good to me. And I do drink moderation, and I don't see anything wrong with it. It's not what go in you, it's what come out of you. If you get a drunk person to drink all the time, cause problems, drinking cause fighting, yes. But sometimes you can drink and go straight home. I am not 100% Christian, and a lot of you are not 100% Christian, you know what it is. You say yo, but you're not under God. We all mess up sometime, we all lie sometime. You might know some preachers and dickies in my community, they lie sometime, they do for the occasion, but they say they're Christians. They're not. God see everything you do. You can't, you can't hide from God but you're half a minute. I don't see anything wrong with this situation, and I'm going to go yes for it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that. I've been studying about this quite some times, and I got, I came up, and I know where I made my mistakes at. My friends, I didn't even like the taste of it. My friend used to come over there and convince me. He was, got so bad, he told me, all I could drink is a whole man breath. I was about 15, about 15 then, and I tried it. Finally, I had to quit it because I couldn't keep up with the fellas. I just had sense enough and had my grandmama putting something on me that I had to quit it. And I'm so glad I quit it. I, I don't know what to do. I have turing, ranch turing as alcoholics, and I can't, can't seem to do anything with, rip one of them out. I had, had, had this brought into jail, I haven't put in jail because we just couldn't do anything with it, breaking in the house, taking everything out of the house. And I know it's, it, it's a bad thing for anybody to get really strung out on alcohol or drugs. That's why I work so hard to try to keep, give our young people a second chance and reentry program, that they have a second chance, that they won't have to go to jail over and over again. They get all the help they can get, then I feel like I did what I could do. And I had talked with one of the Commissioners, I never committed to them, and I always told them that I, I, I would let them know because I even talked to my wife about it. She's a medicine, I'm a deacon. I know I don't always do things right, but I know that that was weighing really heavy on my mind, that how I could save more young people. I can't make them do anything, I found that out in my own family, but I can try to convince them. So I would not vote for it.
But Chairman, I want to say one more thing, please. In this country here, in this county here, you got more drug addicts than alcoholics. We all know this. Alcohol is not a crucial bad thing for anyone to have.
I'm sorry, you didn't understand?
Alcohol is not a bad thing for people who want to drink it. You have a choice in this world to drink alcohol or not drink alcohol. When you go to the restaurant, you got a choice to drink at 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock.
May I address that statement?
No, sir.
No. You have a choice for drugs also, right?
Excuse me, you're out of order.
Also have to say, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I appreciate Tharum's position, I respect it, and Mr. Linus too. I will confirm, he's as good a man as anybody in this room, in my opinion, and he does attend his church on a regular basis. We'll just have to respectfully disagree on this one, as we have done a few times in the past, but I don't, just because the city of New Bern has done it, doesn't mean that, you know, the county necessarily needs to do it. So my position is I would vote no against changing it.
I've listened to the people that came up here to talk, I've listened to my fellow Commissioners. I've talked to people in the area where I live, I've talked to people in other precincts in my district, and I do not see where it makes a difference between 10 and 12 as far as somebody needing a drink, and therefore I'll vote no.
Round the vote.
Call the robe.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
No.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Chairman Moore?
No.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Now you're a button man.
You're welcome to watch good government continue.
Mr. Chairman, will you give them a couple minutes to?
Give them a minute.
Take a, Mr. Chairman, I move we take a?
Five-minute break.
Five-minute recess, so anybody that doesn't want to stay can leave.
Appreciate that. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda that consists of the minutes, tax releases and refunds, the Juneteenth proclamation, military service pension of the quarter. Excuse me, I tried to rush this. We have position as citizens.
You wanted to chip me out of the opportunity to say Wonsider again, didn't you?
It's not a name from North Carolina, it's from Southern Indiana. I'm here for the ERA. You've seen us all before, dressed in purple, and we're not going away, but I do want to tell y'all, oh, my name is Linda Wonsider, I live in 1987 Acorn Drive in New Bern. The following places have adopted the Equal Rights Resolution, in Asheville, Lisbon City, Dare County, Durham, Orange County, City of Winston-Salem, Dock, Nags Head, Manio, Kills Devil Hill, Southern Shores, the City of New Bern. And you know, there's only one missing that I can think of, and that's Craven County. We're not on that list. Sad, but we're not. You know, the group of women and men, we've been attending this meetings since last summer, and we've been asking y'all for a resolution to support the passage of an Equal Rights Amendment by the North Carolina General Assembly. You know, when you let your needs be known, something can be done, which y'all did tonight, you have the power to pass the resolution. You have an opportunity to let your constituents know how you feel about women. With the adoption of this resolution, you would be saying that you support the women of Craven County that live and work here, work in their homes or in the workplace. Women are a valuable resource to this economy, and we should be treated fairly and equally. We need you to sign this resolution and send our voice to Raleigh. At every Commissioners' meeting that I've been to, we all stand and we pledge the, we say the pledge of allegiance, and it always ends in justice for all. And I'm asking you, where is the justice for women? So I'm asking you to please support the ERA amendment. Thank you very much.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Susan Long, 1990, Acorn Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. Before I get started, I would like to say thank you for all of you for serving on the Commissioners' Board. It is a hard job. I've learned a lot by being here over the last several months, and I'm proud of all of you. You do a great job, and I thank you. On May 30th, the State of Illinois voted in favor of ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. It became the 37th state to vote for ratification. One more state is needed for final ratification. One more state is needed for final ratification. And North Carolina has the historic opportunity to be that thirty-eighth state. The equal rights amendment seeks to enshrine our country's values of fairness and equality in the United States Constitution. Equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. The League of Women Voters of North Carolina has long supported the legislation and urges the general. I give you a copy of this bill, so you will have an opportunity to read and have a comprehensive understanding of its writing. We have been coming to the commissioners meetings for many months now, in an effort to educate you on the importance of an equal rights amendment. Women are tired of begging men to let them join in activities on an equal basis. Please let us vote, please let us serve in the military, please let me fly that jet, please let me be paid equal for doing the same job. Please, don't sexually harass me, and the list goes on. And yes, I know, the old arguments that women have laws now to cover most of these issues. Laws which can be changed at the drop of a hat. It is mighty hard to change the Constitution. I am reminded that many people say the Fourteenth Amendment covers women's rights. But I say no, simply because it has been proven by the Constitution itself. Did we not have to have the Nineteenth Amendment to vote? I think nineteen comes after fourteen. Uh, if we are under, if we were equal under the Fourteenth Amendment, we would not need the Nineteenth Amendment. Once again, we come before you to ask for a resolution to support ERA and to send this resolution to Raleigh to show Craven County Commissioners support women. And, uh, that piece of paper I was telling you about, the bill, the lady has. Thank you very much.
Ray Griffin?
God bless you once again, appreciate all of your honesty and working hard, and God bless, I know you have to make a lot of decisions. And you're like a preacher. A lot of times you get offended for when you tell the truth, amen? So I know where you're coming, where you're coming from, I've been there and done that. But I want to talk for a few minutes about, um, last week you talked about, there was a lady here to talk about the school system. And of course, we're having some terrible times in our schools, but y'all made the, some votes, I think, and you appropriated some money for resource officers. Which is not, nothing wrong with that, that's great. But I will say today, if, if I'm right, I think I'm right, y'all were talking, giving money to put more resource officers in schools and different things. But what I'm saying is, we can't pay ourselves out of this situation. We can put all the money we want out there. I worked with the federal government, I worked with different people, and they just take money, they throw it situations and throw it situations until they can get it pacified. But what I'm saying is, John Adams once stated, "Our constitution was made for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." Power also always thinks that it is doing God's service when it's violating all of God's laws. Today, every time we turn on the radio or TV, we see the endless story of more and more corruption from the national level to the local level. It makes us sick in the heart, all that is going on. It's like a huge volcano erupting beneath the surface of the earth, and it's all over the world. I think of the innocent faces of our grandchildren, and I hear the politicians shouting about the next election. I see the dead being carried out of the building that has been bombed by cowards, or some school has been shot up by someone who claims revenge. These cowards put their faith in violence as the weapons, uh, destroy our faith in humanity. The picture we see today in our school system is groomed. I want to tell you, I seen right here in Craven County, and I brought this up to the board. I saw a Columbine figure sitting out in the middle of the mall some years ago. And I brought this up to you guys, I brought it up to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education just kind of smoothed it over and said it fell through the cracks. But there was a Columbine figure sitting there, in a bus with a forty-five in his hand, and people walking around the mall looking at it, and some were actually crying. The Ten Commandments have been taken out of the school and replaced with resource officers. The devil has been put in, unleashed, they've done away with prayer, they said, let us have a moment of silent. And no one can argue that we have adopted values and standards contrary to those of God. In this, uh, old world, the only way we're gonna find any peace is in the grave unless we stand up and focus on what's right and change conditions of our heart. Benjamin Franklin once said, "Religion and morality are the essential pillars of a civil society." The shortcomings of our nation are no more than a magnified reflection of the sins of God's people. God has unleashed, I believe, his hands off this nation. You will never be able to stop all the killings, I don't care how much money you throw at it. You'll never be able to stop the drunken situation, the drinks that are going on. We can slow it down, thank God for resource officers, thank God for people that can be there to help. But the only way we're gonna do this is get back to God, God has been taken out of the equation. And I want you to think about this, education without God makes man a clever devil. And that's what we have done in our society. We have men think now more, and they reason more in the world society, they reason and simply say it's gotta be this way or no way at all. And man's philosophy has not worked. They passed all the gun laws, it has not stopped the killing. They passed all these drinking laws, it had to stop that one from drinking and killing somebody. They passed the drug laws, you can't have that amount of drug, but it has not stopped the drug situation. But there's one thing that will stop it. If you get a hold of the hand of God, and you really get serious, and some have talked here tonight, some have talked about alcohol. My father ran an alcoholic business for about fifteen years, and I know how it is. Amen, God bless you.
Johnny Clark? Mr. Park, leave?
Yeah, Johnny, leave.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there are no more names.
There we go, thank you. We have the consent agenda, do I have a motion? So move. Second? All in favor, no, roll call both, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Dr. Megan Doyle, school capital outlay modification request.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. Um, I'm here before you this evening to request, uh, kind of a change. Quite frankly, um, in our fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget, we requested our capital outlay, um, amount in the same amount as, um, two thousand eighteen. However, in the two thousand eighteen budget, which is the one that we are getting ready to complete, one of the category one requests was to replace or actually add bathrooms to Grand May Barton Elementary School. Uh, we put that job out to bid in March because we had to have that work completed this summer, it was a little bit too late, uh, in last summer's, um, after the appropriation. And the bids came in well over our estimated cost. As a result, that money is still sitting there on your side of the fence. And we are requesting that, not that we don't do the project, but that we defer it to fiscal year two thousand nineteen and take three of the jobs that we are trying to complete in fiscal year two thousand nineteen and bring them forward to this budget. Those three jobs are replacing the chillers at Havelock Elementary School, Bridgeton Elementary School, and purchasing one of two temporary buildings for J.T. Barber Elementary School. Our rationale for moving the job for Bridgeton, or, sorry, not Bridgeton, for, um, Grand May Barton forward is that we want to have the opportunity to complete our long-range facility plan. To decide whether, uh, what, what our use for Grand May Barton is going to continue to be, is one of the lowest enrolled schools in our district, it's also one of the oldest, and it's close to end of use. And so before we make a decision, we want to make sure what we're gonna do for our long-range plan that includes all twenty-five of our schools, and that will give us some opportunity in a little bit more time. So if we decide to move forward with the bathrooms, then we might come with a different request in fiscal year nineteen, or an adjustment of our capital request. Or if we decide that there's not a use, um, or there's not gonna be a very long use for Grand May Barton, then we would come and make that, provide that information to the Board of Commissioners at that time.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, guys have.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Department of Manners, Emergency Service, Stanley Kite.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to, uh, announce to you tonight that, uh, the following departments have received grants from the North Carolina Department of Insurance. And I have with, uh, with you here tonight, representatives that I'm gonna call out one at a time as I announce them to come up and make their presentations. If you don't have any objection, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring them all up, and they can singularly explain their grants to you at that time. First is Fort Bonn Rural Volunteer Fire Department, they have Chief Milligan here to apprise you the information on their grant request for thirty thousand dollars. And by the way, this is all funds from the North Carolina Department of Insurance. Second is Little Swift Creek Volunteer Fire Department, have Mr. Kewell Whitford, the board, uh, here to present their grant award for twenty-four thousand, three hundred, four dollars and forty-three cent. Representing number nine Township Fire Department, have Mr. Roger Weatherington for their grant of nine thousand dollars. Have the Dover Volunteer Fire Department, Chief Brad White, representing their grant for twenty-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars. And for the Vanceboro Rural Volunteer Fire Department, have Chief Lewis representing their grant for twelve thousand and nine hundred dollars. And I will stay for any assistance that I might provide, but I'd rather let these representatives give their own explanation. Little Swift?
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Greg Milligan, uh, Fire Chief at Fort Bonn Rural Volunteer Fire Department. This year, we were awarded a grant of thirty thousand dollars. And our intentions are to, uh, purchase a three thousand gallon tanker. Uh, this would replace our nineteen ninety-one, uh, tanker that we currently have at our substation. Uh, we have not entered into any con, uh, contract agreement with any vendors, uh, at this time, we're currently, uh, soliciting bids from four vendors. Estimated cost on the truck will be between two hundred and fifty and two hundred and seventy-six thousand. Currently, we have checked with BBNT and local government, Federal Credit Union. The interest will be between four and five percent, and we're looking at a fifteen-year loan. Currently, we have two outstanding loans, uh, at this time. One is for our, uh, one engine, currently we owe forty-two thousand on it. That loan is due in twenty twenty-two. Our second loan for a substation is due in twenty twenty-two as well, and it's less than twenty thousand. I am happy to report that, uh, our, one of our engines, uh, we paid off last month, which was six years early. And we saved a, uh, interest of over thirty thousand for that. I am requesting from y'all permission to purchase the truck, and depending on that decision, I would like to request, uh, thirty thousand match, uh, that the state has. And we are planning to put thirty thousand along with that, and that would give us ninety thousand to put down on the truck. You don't have any questions?
Have a motion?
Just move.
My second.
Any discussion? Any no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners, uh, my name is Kewell Whitford, board member of Little Swift Creek Fire Department in Surratt, Smackdab, and Earl. Greetings from there to here to each of you. Tonight, we are requesting, as you see on your, uh, information, twenty-four thousand, three hundred, four dollars and forty-three cents. Uh, this, part of this would be, you know, going full, going towards purchasing of some, uh, radio equipment that would enhance our very far out in the country, uh, communications level, communicate back here. To communications here in town, or on scene, or whatever, and some other extrication equipment, uh, some upgrades in that, where many of our calls now do involve traffic, uh, vehicle issues. And, uh, upgrading some of our equipment to a new style of tool, e-hydraulic tool, more of a heavier duty battery power type situation. Rather than, uh, all of, uh, bringing out the gas engines and the hydraulics involved in that. We would greatly appreciate your consideration and helping us out, uh, in serving our district and wherever we're called in the county or, or state.
Okay, I'll make that motion, I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
I'm Roger Weatherington, and I'm with the number nine Township Fire and Rescue. I, um, want to thank y'all for y'all's service and, and the ones you just approved, because they're my neighboring department, and it only enhances my department by them getting better equipment. I would, uh, also like for y'all to reserve the date of October the twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, because we're, we're holding our fiftieth, uh, anniversary day that month. And I've been proud to serve forty-nine, and I'm gonna be fifty this year, I'm gonna get one more star. I'm also the trep, uh, current treasurer, uh, uh, safety officer. And I am president-elect and treasurer-elect for next year. So I've been around, as everybody says, yes, I hooked up the mule to the, to the first fire engine that we had. But getting down to real business, we were awarded eighteen thousand dollars for funding from the state for, for a grant. And some, some years ago, I think it's about twelve years ago, we were lucky enough to get awarded three hundred and five thousand dollars from the federal government, of which we had to pay five percent, and y'all helped us with it then. What we're faced with now is, we bought air packs and air bottles and stuff, and our air, air bottles are fixing to go out. And we have to replace those air, air bottles to be in compliance with, with NFPA. So I'm asking for the county to match the nine thousand dollars that we're getting from the state, which will give us a total of eighteen thousand dollars, which would let us replace ninety percent of our air bottles. And we, hopefully, next year, we'll get the other ten percent of them.
Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Well, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner Linder? Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, good evening, Brad White, Fire Chief, Dover Fire Department, good to see you guys here today, unfortunately, I just see you about one time a year. We are asking this year for some operational equipment from the state of North Carolina, which they have granted us, their operational, safety, and training equipment. We work hard on the western end of the county, just like Fort Bonn, want to keep things going and keep, uh, insurance rates down, and, uh, so, just to get down to it, do you guys have any questions on our equipment list? How we're working anything?
Any question?
No.
Move to.
We, we appreciate you guys.
May, move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief Stacy Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Stacy Lewis, Fire Chief, Vanceboro Fire Department. Uh, come to you tonight on behalf of the department, ask, uh, to help to fund our matching part on the, the Department Insurance Grant of twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. This grant was awarded for ten complete sets of turnout gear, which would be ten gloves, ten boots, uh, ten coats, ten pants, uh, ten helmets, and ten hoods. We've gone through our inventory of turnout gear, and NFPA, uh, suggests every ten years that the gear will be replaced. And this large amount of gear would, uh, would pretty much try to knock some of our old gear out. Back, uh, back in September last year, the department was fortunate enough to get a AFG grant. Uh, we replaced all our air packs, we had air packs that were around twenty-eight, uh, twenty-nine years old. So, uh, when that grant was awarded, uh, we, uh, brought it up to the department to switch from our twenty-two sixteen's to upgrade to twenty, uh, fif, uh, forty-five hundred. That time it passed, the company passed in the board, and, uh, we had to buy a new compressor to get it up to that pressure. I had to buy some couple other things, uh, cascade cylinders for truck brackets. Uh, so it kind of, out of the grant, uh, out of our checking account, we spent about, about thirty.
of our checking account, we spent about, about thirty thousand to do that upgrade, so we're requesting, uh, department help match this grant at twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars, please.
Stacy? Uh, well, I would, I want to make a motion here. Stacy, rather than, uh, take, we'd like to take this out of the, our fund balance, not your fund balance, but our fund balance, and give you the money that way, okay? Uh, have a second on that?
I'm not sure.
No. They have, they have a fund balance, and we have a fund balance for the fire department. This would, instead of coming out of general revenues, could come out of that fund balance.
I'll second it.
Discussion, um.
Any discussion on?
Okay. Okay, what you got?
Uh. Would you understand now?
Well, you said it didn't matter, uh, bother our fund balance, so.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you may just explain just a touch. So, the, the fire departments have two fund balances on the county's books, well, not on the county's books, they have their own fund balance, which is on their books, and then there's an overage account where during the year, if there's extra valuation, that Mr. Antry may have underestimated, there's additional revenue that comes in, it maintains there for situations where we may need to adjust their budget mid-year. So, this is a, this is a use for that money, um, I, there's enough there to cover this cost. It would not affect your, anything that's in your savings account with the fire department.
Is that okay with you?
Uh, should be. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we, just before we vote, uh, I, I will vote for it, but I just wanted to say, all of our fire departments, we, we thank you for what you do, but I just want to say something about Vanceboro. Yeah. Uh, Vanceboro, uh, during Hurricane Matthew, uh, they worked twenty-four hours a day for, uh, a week or more, um, and did not turn in a bill to Craven County, zero. Uh, they gave the time, uh, Stacy stayed out there, and, um, he had a messed-up shoulder at the time, where he needed to be home, uh, recuperating, but they gave it themselves, all of our fire and rescue do, but I just wanted to make a comment, and just for the record, to be stated, that, um, and all the hard work they did during Hurricane Matthew, we never had to repay them, zero.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and if I could piggyback on that just a little bit, they, these are the real heroes of America. It's not the guys on the football field and basketball and baseball and hitting golf balls and dancing in the halls of Congress. These guys do what they do, and gals too, and they don't get paid a dime. And just like, uh, Commissioner Jones said, during Matthew, this guy was a zombie walking around. He was up for days on end doing rescue missions, and, uh, we appreciate what you do. I, I want you to know that, first of all, the whole board does. And I'd get, we'd all give you medals every week if we could, but, uh, we thank you for what you do.
Number of people that are saved by taking them out by boat, too.
I also thank God for working. Uh, I've been a firefighter now for twenty-two years, and I also built all-time nights and, um, ready for rescue, so I definitely understand what every volunteer firefighter department go through in this county. We don't get paid for it. People coming out, we going in. We risk our lives for, for a little bit of piece of penny. We do it because we love it. We enjoy it. So, I give my hands to all the firefighters in, uh, Craven County as well as myself. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was down in Vanceboro during the storm, and I was so enthused, uh, the farmers and all the officials down there, they gave everything, looked like they had. I, I saw some volunteers out there I hadn't seen in a long time, some that I, I knew, the people standing out there, uh, with their fed peoples there, gave them material that they needed, and, and they was, they wasn't worried about going home. And then that's a blessing to see our citizens working together and trying to help one another, and that's something seemed like it's getting the usual now for people to work to help each other. And I'm, I'm proud that all farmers really working together to work and help the community and the county. Thank you very much.
Roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes our request, and I would like to again thank you for your support and for everything you've done for the emergency services in Craven County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget amendments. Finance director.
Good evening. I have, uh, three amendments on the agenda for you, for your consideration. Uh, the first one is the, for the register of deeds. Uh, the register of deeds collects a real estate, uh, tax on all real property, uh, an excise tax on all real property transactions recorded. Uh, of the amount collected, forty-eight percent is remitted to the North Carolina Department of Revenue on a monthly basis. Collections are running approximately two-point-eight percent ahead of budget estimates, and are causing, um, a projected shortage in the portion remitted to the state. It is estimated an additional twenty thousand will be needed in revenues and expenditures to pay the state for the remainder of the fiscal year.
The motion?
To move.
Second. Discussion?
Just a question, does this, I mean, if theirs is going up, our, don't we get percentage of that as well, or is ours?
Um, yeah, approximately half is remitted to the Department of Revenue, and then we, um, about forty-eight percent, two percent, uh, we keep as an admin fee, and then the other half.
Now, your budget takes into consideration the forty-eight percent, but we've exceeded that, that amount, right? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We're, we're running ahead of budget year-to-date, so what I'm projecting is that we're gonna have a shortfall on the expenditure side, so we're gonna offset that with budgeting some additional revenues.
I believe we need a roll call, vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Okay, the second amendment, amendment on the agenda is for the rescue squads. Uh, ambulance service fees billed and collected by the county on behalf of the following rescue squads are anticipated to exceed budgeted projections. As a result, it is estimated an additional fifty-five thousand will be needed in order to continue remitting, uh, the squad payments through the end of the fiscal year. Uh, those revenue estimates by squad are thirty-four thousand for Vanceboro Rescue, uh, seven thousand for Fort Bonwell, and ten thousand for Township number seven. Again, these would be the, uh, the ninety percent, uh, portion of the billing fees that we collect on their behalf and remit to them.
Motion?
To move.
Second. Roll call. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Okay, uh, the last one I have for you, uh, is for medical examiners. Uh, Craven County has experienced an increase in the number of autopsies performed, uh, by the Office of Chief Medical Examiner, uh, more than what was originally budgeted for. Uh, expenditures year-to-date are running approximately four-point-one percent ahead of last fiscal year and are anticipated to exceed, uh, original budget estimates. The current fee for each autopsy performed is one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, it is estimated an additional twenty thousand, uh, will be needed to cover, uh, these fees through the remainder of the fiscal year.
This increase, uh, in autopsies is mainly due to the opioid problem that we're having in the county. Motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
I'd like to point out that this is an appropriation from the fund balance.
All right. You need a roll call. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appointments pending, urgent, current, rather, upcoming. Appointments will be effective immediately, otherwise, pending appointments, we have Craven County Tourism Development Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. James Hanner.
Okay, James Hanner, and there's another appointment, uh, another name, Presh Pankabala. I'd make a motion to appoint Presh.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that there's some immediacy to this appointment, and, um, if we can have the, whoever it is that's, uh, successfully appointed to this position, if they could start immediately rather than waiting until June thirtieth.
That wouldn't be a problem. Uh, all right, we have two candidates, so I guess we should take a roll call on it.
Commissioner Jones?
Hanner.
Commissioner Liner?
The one I can't pronounce.
Presh.
Pankabala.
Commissioner McCabe?
Uh, the one that just reported for.
Obama.
Commissioner Sampson?
Hunkabala.
Hold on. I was putting names in.
I didn't catch what he said.
Hunkabala.
Oh. Hunkabala.
Commissioner Tyson?
I'm gonna vote for the one that Commissioner Liner can't pronounce.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Uh, Presh.
Uh, Presh, and it's Pankabala.
Pankabala.
So, Pankabala is the one. Nursing Home Advisory, Susan Layton, uh, what, June twelfth, I'll appoint Su- reappoint Susan, I spoke to her. Jessica Edwards is resigning, leaving a vacancy, so have to fill a vacancy on that one. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, terms ending June thirtieth, Todd Stewart, Jennifer Dacey, should I appoint, uh, Ms. Dacey?
I would suggest that you, if my life extended any further, yes.
Oh, I'll appoint Mrs. Dacey. Todd Stewart and Catherine Harrison was November thirteenth. Uh, did we check to see if either one of them wanted to be reappointed?
I believe, uh, all, three of those are seeking reappointment, yes.
Very good. They're appointed, then. Fire Tax Commissioners, term ending June thirtieth, wishing reappointment Sandra Hammer. I have a motion to approve her.
To move.
Seeking appointment to fill spot left by David Brink, James Wesley Hendricks, do I have a motion?
To move.
Okay. Okay, this is on the.
Recreation Advisory?
We have Rec- Recreation. Leslie Hunter.
Do you not have the Recreation Ad- uh, Recreation Advisory Council?
Just a minute. Community Child Protection Team.
I think I skipped it, sir.
Recreation, okay, we've got it now. Eugene Bauer and Christine McCoy.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Kristen McCoy.
Chairman, I would nominate Eugene Bauer.
Okay, there's a point. Regional Airport Authority. Terms ending June third, wishing reappointment Kenny Morris, appointed June two thousand and nine, and Joseph Lee Hay, appointed two thousand and twelve.
And then Leslie.
Leslie Hunter, application attached, wishes to be appointed to fill, uh, vacancy left by Mary McGage.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, support the appointment of all three of those nominees.
Okay, appointed by inclination. Craven County Child Protection Team, we have term expiring, Nadina Anderson, appointed June, uh, May twelfth. I have a motion to appoint, reappoint.
Does she want to be reappointed?
Wishing to be reappointed.
To move.
Local Emergency Planning Committee, vacancies, Samantha Maxwell, application attached. I have an appointment for Samantha.
Uh, move the appointment.
Okay. And let's see, I think that ends most of them. Local Emergency Planning Committee, upcoming appointments, terms ending July thirtieth, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Craven County Planning Board, and Fire Tax Commission. County Attorney's Report.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
First matter is, uh, final acceptance of an offer for property located at one-nineteen State and Lane. The board previously approved an offer tentatively for the amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, the offer was advertised, there were no upset bids, so just before you, tonight, uh, for resolution to authorize the sale.
Excuse me, we were talking.
Before you, for the, um, final, uh, authorization sale.
Motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me before the meeting to, um, for the next matter, um, and if I may, I'm going to read this, um, probably to help me get through it. Uh, it is with a sad heart that I report to the board and to the citizens of Craven County of the passing of, um, former Craven County Attorney, uh, James R. Sugg. Mr. Sugg was, uh, many, many things, um, not the least of which, uh, he served Craven County for many decades as the county attorney. He was first appointed county attorney in nineteen sixty-nine and retired from that position in two thousand and seven. Uh, he was a forty-year Sunday School teacher, a member of the General Assembly, uh, the chairman of the State Democratic Party, past president of the, uh, County's Attorney Association, uh, having been recognized in that role many times, including Attorney of the Year. Everyone called on Mr. Sugg in that capacity from the association for purposes of policy, even down to the school of government for what the law was. Um, as you know, um, at his last meeting here, he received the Order of Longleaf Pine and was a member of countless organizations, um, most of which were dedicated to not only serving the community as a whole, but, um, the, its individuals. And, um, he was a legal giant. I, one point of levity, I, you know, I will always believe that he was the inspiration for the TV show Matlock, down to the Sierra Sucker suit every other day. Um, he was a consummate Southern gentleman, and most importantly, he was, uh, my friend and my mentor. As you can tell from that very short list, he believed in service to the greater good, and this community, um, this county and this state, um, was well-served by him with honor, respect, um, humility, um, skill. I thought back, knowing what he has done or had done for the county, um, some of the achievements under his watch, just so many of them, and some of these were kind of hard to believe or even understand in a day's time because we take so many things for granted, but, you know, he oversaw in addition to the founding of what was originally the, uh, Craven County Hospital, now known as Carolina East, to, um, ensuring that water, I mean, just plain old water was provided to the, um, rural and less fortunate areas of this county in a time when counties just did not undertake such a function. In addition to the public at large, he, um, tirelessly served all the elected officials of this board, as well as the staff of the county, and for more than sixteen years, I had the pleasure of watching him in that role and learning from him. His advice to this board was always spot-on, it was always objective, and, um, he never advanced his personal thoughts or desires while giving his legal advice. He explained that to me one time, and it was probably the best lesson that I ever took from him, and that is, he never stood a ballot box, he wasn't elected, his job was to advise this board, and once it got personal for him, he lost his objectivity, and so therefore, um, he always kept his personal, uh, beliefs and opinions to himself so that he could better serve this board. There will be a memorial service for him this Thursday at noon at Garber, uh, United Methodist Church in Trent Woods, and, um, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity. It was just very important for me to bring this to the board's attention.
Thank you very much.
You said Monday?
Thursday.
What time?
Noon.
Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. County Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I gotta kind of piggyback Jimmy. I never got the opportunity to work with Mr. Sugg, but I certainly have seen his name in a lot of the minutes and things that we reviewed, and had a long career here and did a lot for Craven County, so I certainly understand your emotion, Jimmy, in that. Um, I have a couple things for you tonight. Uh, first, I want to report. First, I want to report back on a productive legislative day. Three commissioners traveled with me last week to Raleigh. We met with all our legislators, had very productive meetings. There's some very good news in the state budget I wanted to make sure the board was aware of. First, we've been awarded a public defender office here in Craven County. That's something that this board has worked on since before my time here. But in the last few years, we've certainly put the acceleration on it because we are seeing folks in jail who need to be represented so we can certainly get them through the judicial system faster. Comes with a $1.3 million budget allotment and staff that will come here. I do want to remind the board, we do have an obligation on the county side to provide office space to these folks. So Mr. Hodges and myself have already began, since we saw the news, dusting off our files, looking at the space that we've, you know, had allocated for this and we'll be coming to the board with a recommendation on what that will take. Second thing, Commissioner Liner may have to help me a bit here, but there was a $2 million budget allotment for Cherry Point to continue the efforts made for the lift van facility and the state's investment and such. That's certainly a positive note for Cherry Point. And George, if I'm not mistaken, that brings the total to.
Five million.
Five million dollars in contributions for that project, so. Want to make there, again, there's a lot, there's a lot in the budget document. I've tried to review it as best I can, I'm sure Dr. Doyle has as well for her impacts there with the, with the schools. But any questions on legislative day, anything there? Commissioners want to chime in on anything that you may have learned or want to share that were there? It was hot.
Yeah, I would, I would just recommend to the public to pay attention to that budget as it pertains to the school. It's not what it's made out to be that's written. There's a lot of things in there that's not coming out correctly as far as what it's saying. So all I would say is pay attention, look for it. Fake news is out there, it's even coming down from our own legislators, I believe, that's, that's out there, so. Intentionally, not intentionally, but that budget, there's something, there's something else if you're done.
I'm done with that and I got two more things, Mr. Chairman. Okay. I wanted to make the board aware, as in past pageantry here on the 2nd July meeting, we have typically canceled that meeting. I know that several commissioners are traveling to the NACO conference this year and our meeting would coincide with the last day of the NACO conference. I would tell you, the 2nd July meeting is usually the lightest agenda of the year. If we have it, most things can be carried over from either the 1st July meeting or the 2nd, or the 1st August meeting. But it's the board's pleasure if you would wish to cancel that meeting this time.
Make the motion, we cancel.
Second. Go ahead, the second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
You got it.
And, Mr. Chair, just to follow up from our earlier meeting, acquiring about the commissioners' availability for further budget discussions.
Can I ask you a question?
You may.
How much time would it take us tonight? If we omit the commissioners' comments. Can we get it done tonight?
I think we can. If you're willing to hang for an hour or so.
Everybody willing to hang?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that we would, I've got a very busy weekend on and if we don't do it tonight, I probably won't return this week.
We covered a tremendous amount, there's very few things left. However, most of my stuff's across the street, so I'm going to have to have some time unless you want to go back over there.
Is he still, is he still there?
Yes. Well, I don't know. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's all I have unless you have things for me.
So I think we need a motion on this to continue, first of all, omit the commissioners' comments for tonight.
So move.
Commissioner Sampson, so moves, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Nay.
Nay.
I think the ayes have it.
Sorry, ladies. Sorry, ladies.
Mr. Chair, anything else for, for me?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, ladies, sorry.
Okay, so let's recess to the.
Recession nine, location 411 Craven Street.
Thank you for coming.